Go on mute?
No. Everybody's unmuted.
We have Rob.
Actually, they're not.
No?
He hasn't joined in yet.
Oh, you can, you can tell from that.
All right, be alive.
Do you have a call before we?
Right.
Good.
We could do that, thank you.
And I don't have a, uh, dabble, so I guess I'll just.
Yep, just now.
So?
I have it.
So we need to make sure we get Rob online before we start, because that is our, you know, coordinating presentations.
Okay.
Yep. Give Erica just a minute here and track Rob down.
Okay. Is Kevin online?
Yes. He is.
Yeah.
There's Rob, right there.
Great, great.
Uh, he is muted.
Well, you're in charge of the meeting.
Yeah.
Erica, wow!
If we did.
Oh, all right. Erica is powerful.
She doesn't move.
She controls that.
So Joanna's saying he can barely hear us on YouTube.
I can turn it up.
Do you want me to?
They have the ability to mute and unmute them.
Oh, I guess.
Oh, they do.
Thank you again, Erica. Diana, I appreciate that, that trick does not work. It tells me that the host has muted me.
Hey, John, how about now, can you hear us?
Well, I guess I just have to sneeze into the microphone, sorry guys.
Is John able to hear us?
Better. That's better.
Okay.
It's better?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, uh, so is this everyone?
I think so.
Okay, um, whoa, one person's waiting?
There's Rob.
There he is.
Markin.
Okay. Okay, um, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Okay, this is a special meeting of the Board of Education for Chico Unified School District, uh, April 1, 2020. And if you would, please join me in a voiceover. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the common people of America, which are one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
I'll send it to Tim Berg for a minute there.
Yeah, we're gonna, uh, start our meeting with our consent calendar. And, uh, is there anyone who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar?
Yes.
Board members?
No.
No.
Okay, uh, with that in mind, uh, would, uh, someone like to make a motion?
I'm, uh, passing this consent calendar.
All sitting.
Okay, motion by Dr. Kaiser, second by Tom Lando. And we will have a roll call vote, starting with the people on Zoom. Tom?
Lando, aye.
Kaiser?
Kaiser, aye.
Robinson, aye.
Okay.
Humpy, aye.
Gretchen, aye. Okay, the consent calendar passes. Our next item is a discussion action item with regards to presentation of the draft trustee area map options. And this is, uh, from our representatives with King &amp; Associates. And I believe we have Rob on the Zoom.
We have Rob.
Yes, and can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir. Yes, we can.
Yes, I can hear it. My computer's telling me that it won't turn my camera on, so I'm a little disappointed about that, because I even put on a jacket and everything.
Just feeling.
Got a thingy there.
The wrong issue.
Yeah, it is raining out. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah. Jamie, he's in a separate room in our office here. We came to powwow before the meeting and she'll, she at least is visible, and she will be the one, uh, kind of leading a lot of the presentation, uh, anyway. So we are very happy and excited to be kind of pushing the frontier of how we can still just conduct our business and show you, uh, what we have with these draft maps that we've developed so far. So Jamie just wanted.
Is she? I can't, I can't see you.
Oh, I see you.
You can see me. I don't think anyone can see you.
No, I, I know that they can't.
Yeah, Rob, Rob cannot be seen. There might be something to do with both of them being in the same room or something, I don't know. Are you both in the same room?
No. Um, I can preserve from, let me give us one second.
Jamie? Jamie, this is Kelly. We do have the PowerPoint that we can show on this end.
Okay. And without you going, you already, presentation. The only one can know right now I do PowerPoints, so I could be, yeah.
So the host is disabled participant screen sharing.
Is that our phone?
Yeah, this is that I can't share my screen, so we have the quick, it, 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 there you go. But Jamie can share the presentation. There you go.
Jamie, can you hear me? This is Kelly.
They don't, they don't need to share the screen.
Yes, hello, Kelly.
You don't need to share your screen, we have it, the presentation up on our screen.
Okay. All right, so I can just start from the beginning then. So tonight, we're gonna share the trustee area initial draft, um, maps. First of all, thank you for having us, everybody. I hope everybody's staying safe and healthy and, um, is still, you know, doing well. And we wanted to, um, do a quick review of the input that was gathered at the previous two meetings and, um, kind of go over the criteria that we used to develop these initial three scenarios. Um, so the criteria that was discussed during the last two public meetings, you have, uh, we've discussed the, um, constraints that are set by, in, in, there by the law. Please.
Okay, Jamie, you just have.
Please. Please. But, um, and, um, and the following slide will actually be back there on a map. Each, each trustee area must can, it would be, and then three days for, for sixty five.
So this is really not where it is.
Maybe, maybe, we cover both high school attendance areas as well towards preparing, um, communities that are interested, um, to be kept together in a single trustee area. Barbara, Chapman Town, South Campus, and the avenues specifically were discussed at the meeting. Um, and we also, uh, the green line was also brought up as, as that area to consider. Um, the trustee areas should be as balanced as possible from a socioeconomic standpoint. That was also something that was discussed. We used media hospital income from the American Community Survey and screen reviews lunch statistics, um, of your student population to look at socioeconomic. And we will look at those later in the presentation. So this next slide shows the area highly concentrated Hispanic/Latino population, the whole area outline, and, uh, the whole area, the specific census block groups. We wanted to review kind of quickly the timeline for the bi- trustee area elections. You declared your intent to transition on February 19th. You've had two public outreach meetings on March 4th and March 11th. Tonight, we're gonna present the draft trustee area map. Um, on the 15th of this month, we'll have the first public hearing to gather input on those draft trustee area maps. Um, we'll have another meeting on April 22nd, which is the second hearing on those draft maps after we, or, or, uh, or, we, we, we're gonna get that coming April 15th. Uh, the board will adopt the map, um, to be determined dates for to get, uh, both county and state approval. So gone to the draft trustee area maps and data. So three initial draft maps were created. The presentation includes a map for each option as well as some key demographic information. Um, again, on April 15th, we will hold a public hearing to gather feedback on these maps, all in which we might revise these maps or potentially create, um, additional scenarios for you to look at. Um, these first maps were developed using the criteria most discussed again at those community outreach meetings. And we do anticipate edits very early in the process to see these first maps and realize that they make an additional criteria that wasn't discussed, um, that can be applied to the issues that we've seen, of course, and we want to develop so that they best balance a number of goals. So the first scenario is the blue plan. Uh, you can see on the map, that's zero, is one, two, three, four, and five. We've also included the school locations on the map, the elementarys, the high schools, all district-owned properties. Um, but I want, I, you.
So that's two.
School in your district within it. Do you have a fairly high percentage of open enrollment? In other words, students travel around the, the, the.
I'm having a hard time here.
I am too.
Jamie, we keep losing you coming in and out. Jamie, I think we're gonna have to have you.
Um, pardon me?
Jamie, I think we're gonna need to have you call in and, um, have you walk us through over a phone line? Because, uh, at least in this room, you're getting mumbled and we, we can't hear what you're saying. I will say that this is just the, uh, draft review for the board. It's not a public hearing. We will have two public hearings coming up. Um, so we can walk through the agenda that you gave us and you get into discussion about the maps. But, uh, unfortunately, technology's not working.
Let me try moving out into the main office and we'll see if that, pretty good.
You sound great, yeah.
We're gonna take.
She needs to cut off her video.
She needs to speak too far away from that. Is that better?
Yes.
Don't think, just to turn off the video. And you might get better audio.
Yes, the, the stream causes issues.
Jamie, can you turn off your video and just, uh, that way we'll have more bandwidth, hopefully?
Yes. All right, is that better? Do you seem to be hearing any better?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. So, so where did I lose everybody? I apologize.
Perhaps start from the beginning.
We're gonna go with the blue plan.
Yes.
Okay, so the blue plan, so I'll start over with the blue plan. And let me know if you have trouble hearing me, and if you do, then I'm happy to call in. And I apologize, we're, this is our first board meeting through Zoom, so we're still figuring out our technology as we go. Um, so the blue plan, you can see on the map, the, the various trustee areas. Uh, this plan was really designed to most closely place trustee areas within one high school boundary as much as possible. So that, that's kind of how this plan aligns, um, while still, you know, adhering to all of those, um, uh, state and federal guidelines that we have to adhere to. Um, additionally, we wanted to include the locations of the schools on the map, all the district-owned properties. But I, the point that I wanted to make was that later in the presentation, you'll see some really important data about the percentage of students enrolled in your schools that reside in each of these boundaries. Because while you'll see individual schools and individual trustee areas in all three draft plans, nearly every school is represented by some measure within each trustee area. So you have a high percentage of open enrollment, and your students travel all over your district to attend all of the different schools and special programs. So I think it's important to note that a trustee area isn't necessarily representing just those schools that are located within it, because the majority of your student population, nearly all of it in every trustee area, is attending nearly every single school in your district. And then again, we'll get to that later. So if you go to the next slide, we give you some data on the blue plan map. Um, this is kind of a high-level analysis of the data. It does adhere to the total population guidelines, and the deviation is, um, within the, the five percent that it means to be, um, trustee areas one and four. Pardon me? Trustee areas one and four are almost entirely within the Pleasant Valley High School boundary, and trustee areas two, three, and five are entirely, or almost entirely, within the Chico High School boundary.
Okay, can I say one thing before you go further? Is that on, um, the maps, at least that I saw, because the, the little key was so small, it was really hard to distinguish those two kind of lavender-ish colored areas. So if you could please, with each one of those maps, indicate which area is trustee area two and which area is trustee area four?
Sure.
Yeah, one, two, three, and four.
Right, the trustee, so we can, I can indicate it verbally now, and then we can revise the maps to put the trustee area numbers with, and with polygons themselves.
That would be great.
And, and then we're also in the process of preparing, or we have already prepared, um, since the draft maps were giving you last week, large format maps, which will include all the street games, all of the individual circles. And you can make those available on your webpage, and then that will allow individuals on my computer screen or on their phones to look at the map as zoom as far in as they'd like.
That would be very helpful.
Yes, it would.
Pardon me?
Thank you. Thank you, that would be helpful. So trustee area one is that large purple area on the left, right?
Well, then, it's the, to the, the trustee area that's north and west. Um, and, you know, the, the issue with that purple area that kind of is the furthest west and south is that that is all one census block.
Yes, one census block group covers the entire western end of your district from half to bottom.
Got it.
And.
Okay.
They're covering that the last.
There's, there's no way, we, we cannot draw a boundary through that census block group.
Okay.
So that's trustee area one. And the green area is trustee area two.
That's just to the right? Whoa, whoa, whoa.
It's underneath.
Is that underneath or to the right? Because the way it puts it, mostly green to the.
The area that's in the central and south portion.
It has Emma Wilson and Rosedale.
It has what?
Emma Wilson and Rosedale in there.
Okay, okay, that's number two?
Yes.
All right.
Number three is the central area. Uh, the yellow area has Hooker Oak and kind of reaches up north, has Shasta as well.
Not quite.
Not quite, but.
Four is the northeast part of the city. That includes, uh, Marigold, Sierra View, and the Old Al schools.
Mm-hmm.
And then number five is the southeastern part with Chapman and Little Chico Creek schools. So maybe identifying the schools that are in each one might be the quickest way to make sure that we're all have the same numbers in our mind when we're talking about them. And yes, that's a great suggestion. We will give you new versions of the maps that have labels of the areas, so you can have my website tomorrow.
Perfect, thank you.
I'll get them, yeah.
Okay, so you said the main, uh, one of the main, uh, considerations here was something about the high schools that, can you please repeat that?
Uh-huh, sure. So some of the feedback that we got at the first two meetings was that, um, there was some interest in looking at a draft plan. Trustee areas one and four are, trustee areas one and four are almost entirely within the Pleasant Valley High School. The avenue, the avenues are split between two trustee areas.
This is, there was also a long discussion of certain neighborhoods on each and after each of these plans. We'll give a quick recap of how it does with the high school boundary question, how it does with the neighborhood's question. And then we'll move into some other more specific data.
Okay.
All right, moving on to the green plan. This plan was designed to ensure each trustee area contains some area in both high school boundaries. So it's kind of the opposite of that last plan. Um, ensuring that, you know, there were, that no, uh, one trustee area fell entirely within the high school boundary.
Right. And then do we need to do a quick rundown of confirming which numbers or which ones again?
Yes, I would appreciate that, yes.
Okay.
So, yeah, so number one is again the areas of the far west that, uh, now this one is, is the one that contains Emma Wilson and Rosedale. Number two is, uh, kind of the northwest part of the main city that contains Shasta and Farivu. Number three is the, the one that covers the central area of the city, uh, Centrus and Hooker Oak down through Chico Junior High and Chico High. Number four is your northeastern part with, uh, Marigold and Sierra View. And then number five is the southeastern part with Little Chico Creek, Harsh, and Chapman.
Very good.
So if we move forward onto the next slide, the data for the green plan map, again, keeps that area that's highly Hispanic and Latina geographically compact and concentrated in one trustee area. Uh, it meets the total population guidelines. Um, all trustee areas again are at least probably within both high school boundaries. The Barbara neighborhood is in a different trustee area than Chapman Town, while South Campus and the avenues are each split between two or more trustee areas. So it's less neighborhood compaction in this plan.
Yeah, this was the one that was specifically focused on, if, if the issue of making sure that each trustee area has a piece of both high school boundaries was the foremost consideration. And then we still look at how the other considerations, uh, come in on this one.
Great. Okay, but one of the things, um, that you just mentioned, uh, I think is, is, um, questionable because, um, I think one of the things that I had requested in the first meeting we had was that we do overlays of the school district boundaries for each school. I wanted to see where the boundaries were. And in order to do that, I took from our demographic report that we last had, as best I could, I took, you know, the map of the boundaries. And it looks to me like Chapman, the way that on this map, on the green, you're cutting Chapman's boundaries kind of in half.
Okay.
Because Chapman, Chapman extends all the way down into, off of Dayton Road, way down to Dayton Road, and I don't know how far it goes. But my understanding is that, I know Kathy lives in that area, and Kathy's district, if she were to have children going to school, would be Chapman. And she's pretty far down there.
So are we talking about the neighborhood boundary or the, the elementary?
No, we're talking about the boundary for, uh, Chapman is a neighborhood school.
Right.
So any kids that go to Chapman, if you live in that area, you go to Chapman unless you form Chen out of that area.
Emma Wilson is where my kids go, and that's because they're in quote-unquote "the city limits", and their, their, their school boundary is Emma Wilson.
No, it's not, Kathy. If you look at a bond.
Almost no one I know, literally in this area, the Stanley area, almost no one I know goes to Chapman.
Well, that may well be the case. But if you're registered. But if you're registering a child online on the school district's website, if you put in your address, the school that comes up as the neighborhood school is Chapman. Interesting.
So I think there's, I think there's some distinction that probably deserves a discussion between, between the neighborhood versus the elementary school boundary and how communities identify. So I think that, yes, some people identify, you know, if my neighborhood school is Chapman and I live in that very large boundary which encompasses a pretty significant geographic area of your district. If they consider that the Chapman neighborhood because Chapman's their elementary school and if that's, that's the direction we're given, and that's different, I think, than the feedback that we got and needs that we grow, and up in Chico considers what kind of the natural boundaries of the Chapman neighborhood are.
So I would, I would like to, I would like to discuss that in greater detail, but why don't we wait until you're done with your presentation and then we can.
And I will say this, we do have maps that show that the school boundaries, it gets very convoluted in a map to layer trustee areas than with elementary boundaries and with junior high boundaries and with high school boundaries. We can certainly do that, we can make multiple maps. And I think that might be easier than trying to include everything on one map.
And actually, we actually already made those multiple maps and provided those to the district yesterday. So we'll make sure that those, if not everyone has that chance to see those, make sure those are also made onto the website.
Yeah, it certainly was something we considered. I mean, we had those boundaries on the maps as we were making the trustee areas. And like Rob said, he already provided them to someone in the district yesterday. So they should make their way to you and then, and that should be helpful to inform the discussion.
Jamie, if I can clarify, this took into consideration the high school boundaries, correct? You wanted each trustee area to have a part of each high school, is that correct?
Right, yes, it's correct.
So it wasn't the elementary boundaries that was a high school boundary?
Mm-hmm. Right, so we have, we need to have, you know, kind of a starting point with these maps, right? Where we're considering, we're looking at all of the different criteria that, so, you know, obviously we have to use the legal criteria that we're constrained by. And then based on the feedback from the two meetings that we've had for as far as neighborhoods and considerations of high school boundaries, you know, we worked from those and that's what, how these three draft maps came about. But again, it's very common to have kind of these initial maps and then robust discussions after they're presented and then revisions and potentially even additional scenarios that come back.
Sure, it's a work in progress.
Absolutely, it's continued, it definitely is an evolution.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. And so the, the purple plan, this, we've kind of shifted our focus away from the high school boundary issue of whether they're all within one cohesively or whether they cross, they all cross the high school boundary. And we really wanted to look at the discussion of that, those neighborhoods that were brought up at the meeting. And so this scenario was designed to focus on grouping neighborhoods together that were mentioned at the meeting. And so in this purple plan map, Rob can kind of go through and give you the various trustee areas and the colors. And again, we'll get those labels and stuff right over to you.
Absolutely, and so again, so trust, we're typically start west to east or left to right in the map. So the large area taking up the west part of the district is number one and it contains Emma Wilson and Rosedale. And then number two is the area that contains Pleasant Valley and the Old Ale and MacManus and that northern central part. Number three is the very center that has Hooker Oak and Chico High. Number four is the kind of southern central area that has Chapman and Little Chico Creek. And then number five is the large eastern area that contains the remainder of the district.
Okay, so the main consideration on this was looking at the, uh, neighborhoods, right?
Yeah.
Is, is trying to maintain some sort of continuity of neighborhoods.
Correct. Right, so trustee area two in this scenario is almost entirely within the Pleasant High School, High School boundary, Pleasant Valley High School boundary. While trustee area four is entirely within the Chico High School boundary, with the other three trustee areas containing portions of both high school boundaries in this scenario, based on our knowledge of kind of the general neighborhood boundaries. And the Barber, Chapman Town, and South Campus neighborhoods are all within the same trustee area, number four, while the avenues are within trustee area three.
Okay, so if I'm reading this correctly, though, trustee area five actually doesn't have any schools at all within its boundary? Elementary schools?
It does have a part of you as you're located within that trustee area five.
I'd like to raise a question when there's a chance.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so what I noted is besides the issue of potential special interest groups, we had this directive about socioeconomic status.
Mm-hmm.
And Rosedale doesn't belong to a neighborhood. Rosedale is a school of choice.
Correct.
And the students are picked by what language they speak at home. Fifty percent English, fifty percent Spanish. So really, Rosedale doesn't configure at all. And area one, it's just Emma Wilson and that I think is true of all three maps you've drawn. So the concern I have is that we know that we have this tremendous jump in high-rise, fairly expensive student quote unquote housing apartment buildings that are all being built along north.
Mm-hmm.
But north doesn't show up as a significant area here. And the only school that really is directly impacted with Emma Wilson. But we're gonna be really messed over because why is today significant?
Census Day.
Today's Census Day.
Oh, for, yes, it is Census Day. Wherever you are sleeping tonight is where you count. There are no students on campus. Out of seventeen thousand students, there are eighty. Eighty. And that's what's gonna show up on the next census.
Well, we're constrained now by the 2010 census, so we can't move that into consideration.
No, 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 my point is, we thought, my point is, we thought we would fix it with the next census. But now we're screwed.
Yeah. And I, but I also would encourage you just to, once we get through the presentation, I think an important part of that discussion, and that's a very good point, is that, what kind of what I mentioned earlier. So, you know, it's not necessarily a representation of the schools and the enrollment at that school for these trustee areas. It's really a representation of the population that lives there.
I'm just concerned that we may have an uneven presentation of socioeconomic status. That's what I was interpreting of.
Right, yeah.
And we'll be showing you some socioeconomic numbers here, at least for these initial draft scenarios in just another couple of slides.
Sure.
So the, the, I already want to, so the data comparison of the three, we wanted to provide you the 2010, the ten-year-old decennial census data. And the population and the citizen voting age population, the voting age population was American Community Survey data. It's a twenty fourteen to eighteen five year data provided by the Census Bureau. We can't use that data to develop these trustee areas, but it does kind of support and has the same kind of relative distribution as the total population of data that was used. So it kind of, just kind of validates what we're looking at.
Yeah, and while there happen changes, we all know and anticipate that, you know, you'll see numbers that are just wildly drastically different from the current estimates compared to what we're looking at from the, like, exactly ten-year-old census data now.
But, you know, like, I think that there was likely to be a, a big difference.
Oh, yes.
Because today is Census Day.
Yes, no, this, this is.
And that will change things.
Yes.
And so the socioeconomic analysis, again, we looked at, we used a twenty eighteen MHI median household income and average of block groups within each trustee area that was developed. And then we looked at the percent of the students within those trustee areas currently that are, that qualify for free reduced price meals. And you can see the blue plan, we compare trustee area one to trustee area two, three, four, and five. And in trustee area one, the blue plan, you have the biggest kind of gap there. It goes from thirty, the green plan, sorry, that's right, thirty-six to seventy percent in the blue plan of the percent of students on free reduced price meals. So for example, trustee area four, median household income is seventy-three thousand thirty-three, with thirty-six percent of the students residing in that trustee area qualifying for free reduced price meals as opposed to trustee area five, which has a lower median household income of forty-eight thousand six hundred and eighteen and a higher percentage of students on free reduced price meals of seventy percent. So you can kind of see in between the three plans, some are more well balanced from a socioeconomic perspective and some are less balanced. The green plan appears to be the most balanced. The free reduced price lunch populations range from forty-seven percent to sixty-three percent. The median household income ranges from forty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty-one to sixty-three thousand three hundred and fifty-five in trustee area four. So that plan appears to balance out socioeconomic statistics a little bit better than the other plans. Again, that may not be.
Yeah, it'll come out in the public hearing that we have in two weeks. If people consider the extent to which blending those or keeping them as more discreet and diverse populations is more or less preference.
Right, so the purple plan, for example, trustee area four, out of all the trustee areas that were developed, that trustee area four in the purple plan has a median household income of only thirty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven and seventy-seven percent of the students that live there qualify for free reduced lunch. As opposed to trustee area five, which has the highest median household income of any trustee area developed in any of the plans, and anyone has a forty-eight compared to thirty-seven percent of those who qualify for free reduced lunch.
Okay, now that, this slide that you're referring to was not supplied to us in our packets?
It was.
Okay.
Uh, it's not on the, the updated.
I added some material today that I hoped would be presented at the meeting.
That's important, too.
How did you get that?
It's the attachment to the, in the, to the agenda and it's the updated. Standby.
Okay, hold on a sec, I'm trying to get the info. Sorry, I didn't know there was an update.
I think we're all kind of pushing the frontier of how we can adapt and, you know, yeah, let's all be patient as we have.
I've never had so many Zoom meetings in my whole life.
So.
Okay, so let's get through this and then we'll talk about it.
Oh Kathleen, they can't hear you now.
It's mute. I said, I picked up the packet on Friday and neither Dusty or I, neither one of us see that economic distribution.
It was uploaded today, apparently.
Oh, okay.
So, we'll have, you know, I, I, it's on the electronic version on Symbly. And I along with you Kathy, I did not know that as well. So we'll have to, do you not get your information on, just electronically, do you get it?
I wasn't looking for that, I was reading all the stuff that Kelly was doing, but I didn't see anything about an update.
Yeah, so we'll have, yeah, we'll have to provide that.
And it's fine, it's still, this is just a first presentation, it's not even our first public presentation.
I can probably share it on my screen.
Yeah.
And if it would be helpful, I think I could, I'm sitting right next to her around her, I could share it on my screen if that would be helpful.
Boy, thank you.
It was email?
Yeah.
Oh, Erica said she emailed it. Just right now. Just right now, just right now.
Oh, okay.
So if you can open your email, she sent it.
This is Kevin. Erica, if you have the ability to open up and allow Jamie to share her screen, she could share that slide right now in real time.
Share it?
This is why I don't have a camera.
This meeting was scheduled to be.
Okay, so the socioeconomic analysis is, is it after each one or just that one page?
It's just one page.
Okay, that's good.
It's page fifteen, I don't know if that helps.
Yeah, okay.
And then there's another new one, which is page sixteen. Actually, the.
Yeah, if we want to go back to the socioeconomic analysis. So the blue plan, again, we see here the median household income in each trustee area ranges from forty-eight thousand six hundred and eighteen in trustee area five up to seventy-three thousand thirty-three in trustee area four. And those free and reduced lunch, the percent of students living in those trustee areas four and five that qualify for free and reduced lunch ranges from thirty-six to seventy percent. The green plan is the most balanced plan from a socioeconomic perspective.
I agree.
Free and reduced price lunches qualifications range from forty-seven percent to sixty-three percent. And MHI ranges from forty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty-one to sixty-three three fifty-five.
That's pretty dramatic.
Yeah, the purple plan is the least balanced. And you can see trustee area five there again. There has the, the highest median household income of any trustee area that was developed and the fewest number of students that qualify for free and reduced price lunch at eighty-one thousand four hundred and thirty-eight and thirty-seven percent. While trustee area four has the lowest median household income of any trustee area developed in the plan at thirty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven. And the platinum, highest percentage of students qualifying for free and reduced price lunch is seventy-seven percent. So the next slide is the slide that we wanted to share and we apologize, there's an error in trustee area four on this slide, but Rob has correct, since corrected it and we will resend that following the meeting. But what this slide is demonstrating, it's showing the, the schools listed in bold italics are physically located within the trustee area.
And all of the names listed in the trustee area are schools where the portion of that boundary is in the trustee area. So you can go through that, where you might see that purple trustee area five where part of you is the old school visiting present. See that there are actually seven different elementary school boundaries that are represented within that area.
Very good, okay, good.
And then what you on the next, on the following slide, there's a quick companion to that. And this is what Jamie was mentioning with the, it is a lot of percentage numbers, but what you're seeing there is the percent of the students at your three big configuration levels that attend each school. And you can see every single school has at least some representation in every single trustee area.
Right.
In terms of the students who live there, where they're actually in whole.
So for example, if we want to go down trustee area blue one, right? And you wanted to look at that elementary, the percentage of students attending different elementaries. Three percent of the students that live in that trustee area one go to Chapman. Four percent go to Citrus, eight percent go to Emma Wilson, to the Little Chico Creek, twenty-eight percent to MacManus, and you can just. percent to McManus, and you can just kind of go down the column and see, you know, what percentage of students that the trustee area represents, and where they're attending school. And so I think this is important information, because I think it's, you know, we tend to just look at things from a geographic perspective, especially when we're looking at maps, but the data that's behind it, I think, can be really incredibly informative, and can provide a deeper level of insight into, you know, how these trustee areas, how the trustee, the elected trustee, or any of these areas, who they are going to be representing, from a school district perspective.
Well, I would like to suggest that the answer should be everybody, but I would be concerned if it became a political ploy of people pushing, you know, one school over...
We knew there was some discussion about which schools or which school boundary were in certain areas, we thought it was prudent to have this as a commonality, to that information.
Yeah, this is great information, great information to have, thank you for that, because that's exactly what I was wondering about.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, of course, this is going to take a while to digest, because there's a lot of data in this one particular analysis here, which is page seventeen, as well as page, the other two prior pages. So anyhow, just off the top of your heads, Jamie and Rob, are there any other things you'd like to share with us?
I don't know, I think we've covered, I'm just reiterating that we're making sure that, sort of the large format map, so that anyone who's interested can really zoom in and see exactly where any of the interests are within the three different planned trustee areas. And then, again, we have those maps developed that show for each plan overlaying the elementary or the junior high or the high school boundaries, and also we'll make sure that just all of that is available for the general public, so that everyone can come into the public hearing who is interested in two weeks, having, like you said, the time to digest this information, and then we'll hear, like Jamie was saying, I would say it's very uncommon to nail it on the first try, and we anticipate there being some significant revisions to these, and to hear some other ideas of, like, you know, where they do well, and where maybe they can improve, and perhaps even some direction to, you know, not these quite hit everything, because there are way to get a new scenario with some other direction, but we're, you know, we are on hand to answer just whatever, just data or factual questions that there are, and between now and then.
Okay, wait, there's one question I want to ask you, in the interest of total transparency, and that is, were any of these maps designed with a particular objective of having districts that represented current members of the board?
That is information that I had, and that I looked at after the trustee areas were developed, including those other criteria. And as it happens, the green plan actually does currently put all five current trustees in separate areas.
Right, so we, Rob and I developed the trustee area maps together before we had any idea about where current trustee area members lived, but knowing that this might come to light, following the development of these first draft maps, we requested the information, and we discovered that the green scenario actually maintains the current seat for existing board members.
Right, but then for the, for example, for the blue plan, that puts us in four of the five trustees currently living in the Chico High School boundary, no way to have a high school with guiding principal, anyway, there'd be no way to avoid bringing at least two trustees, and the same thing with the neighborhood plan, just with where some of the trustees live, and we don't know names, the addresses, but, and what we understand to be the boundary of the avenues.
Well, and we, I think what we heard loud and clear at the end of the last meeting was that that was not to be a criteria that we use to develop at least draft maps, and it wasn't, but we did look at it following the development.
Okay, we just wanted to know about that, just out of curiosity. Okay, so at this point, do board members have any questions to ask Jamie or Rob?
I don't have any questions, but I want to thank you for your work.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs.
You're very interesting, for what...
Yes.
A lot of information. I think it really gives a good start, and especially the additional information that we received today, that we should further digest.
I'd like to comment on page number seventeen. I find that to be very valuable, and one of the highlights of letting us know that no matter where we are, we're going to represent kids from every part of the district.
That's right, yes.
Yeah, that's a very, very valuable piece of information to have there.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you, and we'll, we'll just go on with our discussion now, if that's okay?
And you guys will listen in?
Sorry for the technical difficulties, and everybody, please stay safe and healthy, and let us know if there's anything we can do in the interim.
And Jamie, you guys will listen, are we discussing this anymore?
Yes.
Okay, you guys will listen in, so that you have the information from the discussion that takes place right now.
Absolutely, yeah, I'm just going to mute our microphone.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thanks so much, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, so Kathy, you had mentioned something that you wanted to get back to, did you want to go back to that?
Sure, my context was a concern about socioeconomic income distributions, because when you look at the ones that group Marigold, and PV, and, you know, Goodwill all together, I assume that would be a higher income one. It's interesting that the green plan was the more economically balanced. My concern, and people have many reasons why they might want their kid to go to a different school than their quote-unquote district, I mean, we have a number of schools of choice, Rosedale, Huparup, et cetera, but the other aspect I would hope we could, I don't think we can avoid it, but mute it, is if, there's a charter that sort of placed to this, is to avoid parents going, I only want my kids going to school with kids that are like us, i.e. more well-off, and so I'm a little bit concerned if people saw such dramatic income distributions that we might even get more pressure on those schools that are already relatively high-income. So that was my concern, I don't think we can dissipate it completely, but I think we should just be aware of it.
That's a good point. Well, how about you, Eileen, or Tom, do you have anything you want to share right now?
One of the things, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Liz?
Yeah.
Okay, one of the things that I want some time to look at, because in just briefly going through this, it's hard to tell, but I have a feeling that, that some of the impact on median household income is areas where there are no children, where people that are retired, or beyond, say, fifty, and their children are raised, may be skewing that bit of data a bit, so I want to take a look at where those, those trustee areas that has the higher median income, exactly where it covers, because we may want to take a look to see if, how many of those households are actually generating children, because I think we've got that data in...
We did.
...in our database from King &amp; Associates, so that, that's just one thing that I wanted to take a deeper dive into.
Part of the problem with that, Eileen, is that, and we've seen it very strongly in my old neighborhood, is neighborhoods do what's called refurbishing or refreshing, and this is ten-year-old data, so...
Right.
It's unlikely that the fifty-to-sixty-year-old who was there with all their kids grown, are still there, and rather that new families are coming in. But I also think with the surge that we have from the campfire, again, that data will also really, really change.
Yeah, I see that our income data is from 2018, which would be pre-campfire.
Exactly.
Well, it's just something to look at, and the other thing that I just wanted to comment on is I, I don't want to anticipate what the new census data is going to show us, and have us try to outguess the change, I think, just wait till the census data comes in, and then react to it. I don't, I don't want to play ten-guessing games on...
Well, we can't.
Yeah, I know.
We can't, we do, what I'm saying is, we know the students are gone. They were sent away spring break. They weren't even allowed to come back and get their stuff.
Now, had they already, I did my census stuff well before that, as soon as it opened, did everybody do it at a different timeline?
Yes, it's been even been extended until June, or July.
Yeah, so it, yeah, it's going to have an impact, Kathy, you're right, but again, it's so messed up that we're just going to have to react to what we have when we get it.
That's right, we planned on that anyway.
Yeah. Okay, Tom, how about you? Any thoughts? You're, you're kind of, can you talk a little louder, we're losing out on you?
Yeah, I have a specific comment at this time, I would like to take some time to really digest this data before I say anything about it.
Okay, okay, that's fair, because it is a lot of new data. How about you, Linda?
No, I'm good, I've been, you know, comments here, but really the same, I want to dig into some of these.
Okay, well, there's something that I want to bring up, and that is that, two things, really, is that I know in our prior discussions, we did speak about different neighborhoods, and that idea was derived from what happened with the city of Chico and their efforts to set up their districts, and so that was very important, but the thing that I was thinking about, too, is that even though we do have a lot of dispersion of children to different schools, and thus far, we've readily been able to accommodate most parents that want to form ten of their kids to different schools, you know, we've got this surge of construction that's going on, and if you look... Who's barking?
Oh, that is me.
Okay, we're going to mute the barking. So that, looking into, you know, one of the big things is, we've got our neighborhood schools, and we've got a few neighborhood schools that currently are just totally landlocked. There's, there's no way that those are going to grow, because they can't, and those two really are kneeled out and Parkview, because there's no place else to expand to. But there's other neighborhood schools that, you know, people identify with their neighborhood school, that's their community for the time that their children are from preschool now to, you know, fifth grade, so that's who they can, you know, they consider, in a lot of ways, their community. So I'm thinking we're a little bit, we need to take that into account, and I think probably the data, and I haven't had a chance to look at it in any great depth, because I just got it, is that in most of the neighborhood schools, you're going to find at least thirty to fifty percent of the kids in that neighborhood who are going to that school, and that we should give some credence and some priority to trying to keep those, the boundaries for some of those schools, because if you think about it, who is going to more than likely be wanting to represent those areas? Where do people come from who are going to possibly be school board members? In my mind, those kind of people are people who are involved in schools from the get-go a lot of times, they might be PTA people, they're people who are involved with schools to begin with. So I was thinking that we should give a little bit more emphasis, and actually look at the overlay of the districts, the areas of residence, for each of the elementary schools, maybe overlay that on, say, the green area map, and see how those things, you know, how, you know, how do those things work together? Taking into account socioeconomic, taking into account also that it looks to me like the green map, if you're looking at it, it, those areas four and five are extending out into areas where we have a lot of growth predicted. And the schools that are going to be most impacted by growth, according to our latest demographic survey, are schools like Marigold, McManus, Little Chico Creek, even Sierra View, and of course, Shasta being out there, they're already totally impacted. So, you know, bearing in mind that, you know, these actually are little communities, and those parents have a vested interest in having a representative that represents them. So that's just the pitch I want to make at this point, is that we at least look at an overlay of where the elementary schools are relative to these maps, and try to get some continuity, try to maintain the continuity as much as possible of where the neighborhoods are that serve particular schools.
Makes sense?
Well, you have a simple mathematical fact, five into twenty-three, thirteen, doesn't go evenly, but you have raised a real point, there are neighborhoods who espouse themselves as having an identity, I suspect people willing to run for school board, it won't be the kids at the elementary level, it'll be middle school and high school, but at least I think we should be aware of that, and look at a way to recognize that as we look at these maps.
I think it would be respectful to those parents and to the schools that we do that, and it would show respect that we've considered that, because, you know, because people are going to go, like, how did you come up with these maps? You know, I'm part of the Parkview community, half of my people are on the other side of the border, why, why is my elected official, you know, I mean, you know, I mean, what are we representing? I mean, we have to be able to say that, you know, we're representing, we can tell people that, yeah, there's a mixture of all different kinds of students in each one of our schools, but also, we do have neighborhood schools, and if we want to strengthen our neighborhood schools, we should give them some, some respect and some credence in our consideration of these boundaries.
Going ahead and taking a look at what's on page seventeen is, is a good way to get to that point, Liz.
I agree.
The phone ringing in the background is Pleasant Valley High School wanting to talk to my senior.
This is Kevin, I just wanted to add one point that might help us. From a financial standpoint, we don't do analysis by school site, so when the board is discussing, I think Kathy you mentioned earlier, representing the entire district...
Yes.
You know, I don't think, this is a side point, I don't think finances are a portion of that. But I think, Liz, you're discussing is maybe some of the culture
Yes.
that within those areas. Um, but again, I think that data that's shown on, on seventeen really, again, plays in the idea that as a trustee, you represent the entire district as a whole, and it's to our benefit if we're to unify schools.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but, and the, the, just the consideration that I'm saying here is that, you know, say for example, you know, I mean, we, we've got like thirty-six percent of Little Chico Creek people, um, that go to their school. What is that? Is that, am I reading this right? What am I, is this student enrollment analysis?
Thirty-six percent of the, um, five Little Chico Creek?
Well, oh, well, see, but these, what these don't give you is the overlay, right? They just give you according to what these different maps are as to who's gonna be in that area, right? So, okay, so look, look, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding what is on this number seventeen. Can, can we unmute, unmute Jamie or Rob?
Hello?
Yes, we're still here.
Okay, um
They're reading for someone to ask us.
Okay, so the question is, we're looking, we wanna make sure, I wanna make sure, um, that on number, uh, page seventeen, the student enrollment analysis, just, just to go through this. So we're looking on, um, say the blue, the blue map. Um, all of, no, not all of Chapman, not all of Chapman apparently is encompassed on number five.
Uh, what, what I'm gonna say here is, just the students who live in, in the Blue Plan trustee area number five,
Right.
twenty-two percent of those elementary age students who live in that area are enrolled in Chapman.
Got it.
Right, but that area five is not the enrollment area of Chapman. Because the enrollment area of Chapman extends all the way down to So we definitely need the overlay to see, to see where these are because
And, and by tomorrow, you will definitely have
Yeah, because, because if we're trying to do something that compares the actual, uh, which I have here, the actual boundaries with your maps to see how they could be jiggled a little bit to keep them consistent with the school boundaries, that's what we need to look at.
And, and, yeah, so we have those overlay maps developed actually, so you will definitely, by tomorrow, you will definitely have access to it.
Okay, that'd be perfect, thank you. So that doesn't really tell you.
No, but I, I get your point with this, with the boundaries, like especially the elementary school boundaries, but boundaries are subject to change. And at a given time, and we were just talking about impacted schools, and so boundaries can change. And so I'm a little concerned if we put too much weight into this topic that we'll be constantly readjusting our trustee area maps as boundaries change within our district.
Well, we're, I don't, I don't, I don't, that's not gonna be the main priority.
Right, I hope not.
Um, and what I'm saying too is that having maps like, like, uh, the ones that divide up the growth areas,
Mm-hmm.
I think that that's gotta be one of our priorities as well.
Right.
That we need to divide up these growth areas because, and also be looking at these, the other information they gave us, which I think is real important with regards to representation. Because, you know, with different plans in the trustee areas, you know, there may be smaller numbers of schools, like
That's true.
you know?
That's a question you'd ask earlier.
Some people have like five schools in the trustee area, and other people have
One.
you know, one or three or something. So that's something we should consider, and then the growth in the future.
Right. But we won't have a huge beat on that until the new census, so, you know, that could almost be put off until we do this again after the census results.
I think the law saying that they have to be nearly equal in population.
Correct.
Not future, current, actually, not current, past tense.
Correct.
Ten years ago. And so I think we have to have a reasonable context that, given what we have to pay attention to, these are reasonable, and we all know there's gonna be change
Absolutely.
after the two thousand twenty census.
Yep.
And I don't think we can call the score this far in advance.
Exactly.
Right, so at this point, um, are we okay with, um, reviewing what we have here? Looking to the overlays that they're going to send us so that we can get even more information, good information? Look at the socioeconomic? Yeah?
This is Eileen, and I think that, that the three that they have given us have, have given us the, the options that we asked for in different configurations. So I don't think we need to ask them to change any of the, um, district, um, boundaries. It's just, I think, for us to pick which one comes closest to doing what we wanna do with the information we have now. I'm, I'm good making a decision off of these three maps.
Well, I would have to disagree. I'm definitely not. I wanna see an overlay of the, the school boundaries, and I will, will not be able to come to a decision until I see that.
And that's coming. They, they have that ready, so you'll have that.
So, if, if, with that information that we all have and is, is on, coming in, does anyone have anything else they want to share?
No.
Okay, then we'll, then I guess we're done? So I do want to, thank you, Jamie, thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Jamie.
Uh, thank everybody, thank the associates. And I think we can go ahead and mute, and, and again, Rob and Jamie, thank you, if you can
Yep.
disammar.
So it did before we close, just wanna give a brief update. Things have been moving really, really quickly uh, over the last couple of weeks in regards to the COVID-nineteen. And, um, we had, uh, sent out just yesterday that we would plan to return with staff on May first and with students on May fourth. And I kid you not, I had hit send maybe two hours before and then, uh, State Superintendent Tony Herman sent out a message to County Superintendents that, uh, it was not recommended that schools remain open and it was, uh, that we continue with distance learning. So, you know, that certainly sparked a lot of conversation. The governor today, again, reiterated the same thing, that frankly, he said, uh, several weeks ago that he did not see schools coming back. And, uh, this evening, Mary Sakuma issued a press release that in fact, all the upcoming schools would go to distance learning, uh, for the duration of this school year. So I wish I could say I had all the answers. Um, again, things have been moving at warp speed and right when we think we have it figured out, here's what we're gonna do, it changes. Um, so if there is a silver lining, the silver lining is that at least now we have a timeframe and we can plan accordingly. Um, I think I have told you, and I've, I've been on record as saying this, I, I don't think that distance learning is the best for all students. I think some students are going to thrive. Um, but with that said, it is where we are, and, and we have fabulous staff. I've been blown away, uh, with the efforts by all of our staff, from special ed to transitional kindergarten all the way through our high schools. They are really adapting and doing a fabulous job. Uh, but we're gonna continue to have to adapt and make change, um, as we live in this new reality. So.
What about the little ones, the preschools?
I have a question for Jim.
Okay, you can say it, ask it.
Okay, uh, I thought he was gonna go to sleep, so I'm gonna ask him again. So, Jim, uh, are, I noticed you've had several back and forths trying to get the teachers to kinda stay on track with what you had told them. So, are they all having office hours five days a week for a short period of time where their students could actually talk to them?
Yes, they have set, used, set office hours from eight-thirty to twelve-thirty every day where they're expected to, um, interact with students, um, whether by, uh, email, um, or some are doing Zoom, some have given their numbers out, um, and having interaction that way. But at least by email, parents can have that conversation with them also, and then also administrators if they need to, uh, get ahold of them. And that's been, that's been, I mean, we haven't heard any complaints from parents or, or administrators or anything, so it seems to be going pretty well right now. And then they prep in the afternoon.
Well, I think, uh, two things, that people have an extension of spring break, just kind of, especially the high school kids just thought, oh, yay! But now that it's all the way to graduation, that kills prom and, and the other kinds of activities and there's a lot of uncertainty about how graduation will happen. Um, there was a very good article in the ER about some nationally recognized college coaches and how they were really making sure to have personal contact so that their athletes, especially the ones whose entire season got canceled, would have that kind of personal support. So I just, it's not gonna be every kid and every teacher, but I certainly hope that the kids who might struggle a little bit more either because of their home setting or their personal situation or skill set would be able to reach out to their teacher and, and get a personal response.
So Kathy, I think what we need to do, uh, as a reminder, we're in day three of online instruction, just, of distance learning. And so, you know, we are all certainly, uh, learning this as we go. But that said, there are shining examples, um, across the district at every school site, uh, the instruction that is taking place. And that is certainly true in special ed, that is, uh, true with our, uh, EL populations. And so what I'd like to do is get us through this first week and let everybody have a chance to breathe. And then I'd be more than happy at our next board meeting to give an update
Perfect.
um, on what, what is happening at different grade levels, what is happening with different, uh, special populations, and give you some of the success stories as well as some of the challenges at that point.
I would really like to see some of our teachers who feel that they are more successful in this venue. And I've already had a senate meeting with the Pico State faculty, and, you know, how some of them, that was, even for them, was very difficult to do that very sudden change. Because, uh, just like, um, you know, was mentioned with CTE, there are some fields where this is way, way, way more difficult than in others.
Absolutely.
But if we have some shiny examples that are willing to show what they've done and kind of encourage other teachers to experiment, I think that would be great.
Okay.
So Kathy, one other thing too, we have asked all the teachers to make contact, uh, personal contact and call, um, either the students, um, if they're older, and then the younger students contact parents. We have counselors contacting also, and then also special education is doing, um, extra contacts to our aides in addition to the teachers, just to check in on work and everything. So Kelly has, has asked and, um, and the teachers are responding to personal contact, not just, uh, an areas communication recording or anything. So we have definitely reached out and done that.
One of the other things, when we did the survey about technology, we put also in there who needed emotional support. And so, uh, the families put that in there too, so our counselors and our wellness counselors are all calling them and then checking in. Plus, they're also kept, calling in the ones that they normally would meet with that needed emotional support.
And we do have quite a few aides within the district, so as we start to see where our needs are, we're gonna be dispatching those aides, we'll be making contact either by phone or through, um, email to help those students that we think might be struggling.
Great.
So the question I had was about preschool. What are we doing about preschool? Are they doing anything?
I'm not sure I can answer that question.
I can't answer that one right now, too, because most of them have been closed. Um, I could certainly have it for the seventeen for you.
I mean, is that, that's, I mean, that's our responsibility too, right?
Yeah.
To, to do that. I just don't know how they can do that when it's, everything is hands-on and play.
Right, and we haven't handed out any type of devices to them.
And they can't read and
Right.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, and I bet those parents are struggling.
Yeah, and that's under, the state preschool is under its own category, so, um, I'm certainly, we can ask
We can ask and find out, get that out.
So there is
Yeah, my grandson's, uh, preschool closed.
Yeah.
But the ones that we operate, right?
They have their own, they have their own school calendar, they operate here.
They're just saying.
Okay, okay. That'd be interesting. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and close the meeting. And we're gonna go to our closed session.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right.